Capital's best, oh wow. This is off. Alright, it's six P M. We're gonna commence the uh October tenth twenty twenty four meeting for the zoning board of appeals. Roll call and Michelle, we do have a quorum, small but mighty four of us this evening. Also want to make sure there's several folks obviously attending. If you do intend to speak, you need to complete the comment card in the back and so we can recognize you and call you up appropriately. Minutes approval of the September minutes. Anybody have any edits or motions?
I move to approve the meeting minutes from September.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor? Aye. Minutes from September's meeting are approved. Organizational procedural items, I just mentioned the comment cards. I don't think we have anything else. There is no unfinished business by knowledge. So before we get onto the new business, I will recite the zoning board of appeals chairman's preamble. Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code and ordinances to the facts of each case. The zoning board of appeals does not create zoning, nor can it change zoning. Matters brought here before the zoning board of appeals are to be concerned only with variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance, the sign ordinance, and development and environmental ordinance. The board has no authority to grant variance for use, density, or height. Further, the board hears cases requesting an appeal to staff interpretation or decision on these same ordinances. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeal may be appealed by petitioning the Superior Court of Cab County within thirty days after the decision here is rendered. So as a footnote to that, right, we are the zoning board of appeals. There is very strict variances that we rule on. There are other matters that may come into play. We are only charged with the exact codes and sections that staff is gonna be mentioning here and detailing in a second. Thanks.
Thank you. So we're here today for Z B A twenty four dash fifteen. That's forty six ninety Kingsdown Road, and they're requesting two variances this evening. So one is from chapter twenty seven, section fifty eight, to allow an accessory structure to encroach into the rear and side setbacks. And the other one is from chapter twenty seven, section two sixty nine, to allow retaining walls to encroach into the rear and side setbacks. So the subject law is owned R one hundred. It's approximately half an acre. So on June fourth of this year, the city of Dunwoody received a code complaint about an unpermitted treehouse that had been constructed over the property line between the subject property and its northwest neighbor at forty seven zero four Kingsdown Road. The portion of the treehouse that was encroaching over the property line has since been removed. When city staff went out to visit the subject property, they also noticed unpermitted retaining walls that had been recently constructed to the rear of the home. So the treehouse is considered an accessory structure which cannot encroach into the ten foot side setback or into the rear setback. And just as a quick note, accessory structures have different rear setbacks. They have a ten foot rear setback. The treehouse encroaches into the side setback by a maximum of ten feet all the way to the property line and into the accessory structure rear setback by a maximum of five feet prompting a variance request. The retaining walls encroach into both the ten foot side setbacks by a maximum of eight feet as well as the standard forty foot rear setback by a maximum of seven feet prompting an additional variance request. On the site plan to the right, you can see the treehouse in red and the retaining walls in blue. The photos all the way to the left show the retaining walls. It's a it's a sort of three tiered system, and then the photo in the middle shows the treehouse. So the encroachment of the retaining walls into the side and rear setbacks would normally prompt a special administrative permit. However, since the improvements are already constructed, the request is included in the variance process. The subject property meets the minimum standards for lot area and width. However, as a pie shaped lot, the property has extremely tapered side property lines that narrow the bill the buildable area to the rear of the house. Additionally, the property slopes down quite a bit, approximately thirty feet from the front property line to the rear property line. At a maximum of four feet each, the retaining walls are a relatively minor project and appear to be the minimum necessary to terrace the rear yard to create flat areas. So while pie structures for children are common in Dunwoody, a treehouse of this size is not a typical improvement in this subdivision. Reduced buildable area in this situation does not constitute a hardship nor a practical difficulty. Since an accessory structure could have been constructed without encroaching into the rear or side setbacks, especially since accessory structures, as I stated earlier, observe a ten foot rear setback which is significantly reduced from the typical forty foot rear setback for the zoning district. Additionally, there are no unique conditions on the property that justify the treehouse accessory structure encroachment into the rear and side setbacks. Though there would not be significant harm in granting the variance request, staff finds that granting the variance for the treehouse accessory structure would be beyond the minimum necessary to afford relief and could constitute a grant of special privileges. Therefore, staff proposes that the treehouse be removed from the applicant's property. So we received six letters in opposition and twenty letters in support. Some of those were included in the packet and others of those were emailed earlier today. In addition, you have printed copies in front of you. The letters in opposition broadly cite concerns about damages to nearby properties. So based on the reasonings described in the previous slide, staff recommends denial of the treehouse request and approval of the retaining walls request subject to the condition shown on the screen here. So the first condition is saying that construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan with the exception that the accessory structure would be removed. And then the second condition states that the accessory structure would need to be removed within ninety days of the variance approval and that the and that city staff would go out to confirm that once the applicant let us know lets us know that they've removed it and am available for any questions.
Board, any initial questions for staff?
I do have one question. So you mentioned that the retaining walls would have on their own would have prompted a special administrative permit or would have gone through that process. If that were the only component of this case, would there be any concern about them as they are? Would they have been approved through the special administrative process or would that have required some kind of investigation or whatever? If they had been, if they had gone through the proper process of seeking permission instead of?
Yeah, so retaining walls like these that are relatively minor projects do typically get approved through the special administrative permit process. Thank you.
Just one question about the treehouse. It says, I just want to make sure it's clear to me and the board and everyone else. Shall be removed from the property, shall be removed from that general area is?
Shall be removed, period.
Okay. And if they in and that's simply because so like an accessory structure of that magnitude is can is not considered compliant under our current code, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. So accessory structures are, you know, broadly structures that are sort of smaller and and you know, have have a less intense use than the main structure on the property, which is the house. And they observe setbacks, just like sort of all other structures above thirty inches in height above grade. So in this case, this accessory structure is encroaching into the side and rear setback.
Quick question, what is the accessory structure? Remind me, the heights variance for accessory structures or the height requirements?
Twenty feet, and this is in and this is in compliance with that height requirement.
Okay. Alright, that's it for now. Would the applicant or their representative care to address the board and state their case? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Galen Vinasco. My address forty six ninety Kingsdown Road, Dunwoody, Georgia, three zero three three.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to request the zoning variance for our property. We are seeking variance for two main reasons, preserving the tree playhouse and the retaining walls. Regarding the the treehouse play structure, we built the treehouse to provide a safe and fun space for our children ages seven and five away from the street. It holds sentimental value to our family and its removal would cause emotional distress. We apologize for not being aware of the ten feet setback rule and hope you allow us to keep things how they are. We believe along this variance fits with the goal of Dunwoody zoning ordinance, which is supports family friendly spaces. The treehouse is safe and blends in with the forest in the backyard. Due to the unique pie shaped design and topography challenges of our property, relocating the structure while adhering to the zoning requirements is impractical. This variance request is minimum and solely aims to preserve the functionality and sentimental value of the treehouse. In regards to the retaining walls, the idea of building the retaining walls arise from consulting a solo engineer after we purchased our home in two thousand nineteen. The retaining walls on our property are crucial for keeping the step slopes stable and preventing erosion. Without them, our yard will be unsafe. The distinct topology makes it hard to meet the zoning requirements. Allowing the variance won't harm public safety or health. Instead, it will keep our property safe and stable. Removing these walls will create financial hardship and go against our efforts to maintain a safe home. Lastly, throughout this process, we have stayed in close communication with Allegra and Paul in the here in the city hall, showing our commitment to following the rules. We have learned a lot about the muddy regulations and are grateful for the guidance that we received. We've applied this knowledge to other projects like adding a fence and a sitting area in the front yard. We care deeply about our community and strike to be respect respectful neighbors. We hope the council will understand our request and will allow us to keep our treehouse and retaining walls, which are important to our family's safety and happiness. Thank you for considering our request.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of uh of the application? I know there's a there's a few. Those are opposed. The total time limit of of ten minutes total. I think we've got about eight left. So everybody's gonna have to succinct, but I'd like to call Jennifer to the to the stand.
Hello. Do you need my full name and address as well?
Yes.
Jennifer Kelmas. I live in Sandy Springs, forty nine West Belle Isle Road. I am a friend and a designer and I have worked with Galen and Basilio for years now in doing minor and major improvements on their property, both inside and outside with respect to the treehouse and how they're using it. One hundred percent these clients of mine did not go into this building with any kind of malicious intent to encroach on the neighbor's property. And as soon as they were made aware that they had, they began taking steps to bring it all back on to their property and have been working with the city in order to meet the the variance requirements. This treehouse is being used to further their personal commitment to the environment and maintaining the trees and learning about how to have a proper ecosystem. They are they, what do you call it when you you convert dirt into soil, trash into soil? Thank you. They're composters. They are constantly aware of the environment. They did not want to do anything to cause any kind of problems on their neighbor's yard. Who are trying to look for improvements in order to have that experience for their kids. It's unique to their property. There's a bunch of trees on that property and part of where that treehouse got built was around a particular tree. That's sort of what happened, and it was just unfortunate that the building lines weren't properly marked when they started. So I'm in for them keeping that treehouse, and if it does have to be brought in from the variance lines, being able to get them to move it, uh, not remove it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alejandra?
Hello, my name is Alejandra Vinasco. I am at seventeen thirty four Ball Mill Court in Dunwoody, Georgia. I am my, she is my sister, and I used to be a kindergarten teacher, so I am currently working with her children. I often use that house with the kids to entertain, to help them. We go out there and we sit, we read. There's a lot of different things that we do there to learn and bond, if you say. So I am for wanting her to keep that house just for the sentimental value of the children. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Tucker.
Hello, Tucker Hildreth, seventeen thirty four Ball Mill Court, Dunwoody, three oh three eight. I'm also here to speak in for favor of the variance. I'm a friend and brother in law of Galen and Basilio. One of the things we talked about was around like undue offense. I think it's important to consider that again, with the shape of the property being pie shaped and then the downslope of the property, you know, I don't think there's really any hardship associated with leaving this this structure in place. And for what it's worth, I mean, everything in there is and everything in the the property is maintained with the utmost degree of care and is very regardless of kind of taste aesthetically pleased. So, thank you.
Thank you. Finally, we have Alejandra. Oh, we have no, there's two, I believe, or is it double duplicate to cards? Yes, there's duplicate cards, my, there's duplicate cards. Okay. That is the the pro comments, so we now have time to entertain those in opposition of the of the variance. And the first one I have is Chris, Chris Lauer.
Hi. My name is Chris Lauer. I live at four seven zero four Kingsdown Road, which is right next to Galen and Basilio. And I first want to say thanks to the staff. They've been really helpful in guiding us through this and also thanks for you. I understand you're all volunteers. So thank you for what you do. Good evening. My name is Chris Lauer. My husband Doug Nelson and I have lived in Heathwood neighborhood since two thousand three, and we have lived at four seven zero four Kingsdown Road since two thousand six. What I love about the neighborhood is the neighbors and the trees and the proximity to the staples of our lives. That's why it was distressing for me to call the city of Dunwoody about the encroachment on my property. In May twenty twenty four, the neighbors at four six nine zero had a property line survey completed which showed encroachment on to my property. When I didn't hear from the neighbors, I suggested we walk the line together to try and resolve the encroaching items. They were not inclined to remove the buried PVC drainage, the rock bed for the drainage, nor the adult treehouse footing from our property. At that point in the conversation, I mentioned setbacks drawn on everyone's plats, and the neighbors ended the discussion then. I felt a formal resolution was best for the neighborhood and contacted the city code enforcement office. Since then, all encroaching items on my property have been removed to just inside the property line and a spite fence erected along the property line. The drainage rock beds along the property line and fence posts were narrowed and moved just inside the fence. If the three retaining walls were dismantled and or fit inside the setbacks, then the rock beds would have more space for the drainage to dissipate in their yard instead of directing runoff to Devonshire Court and eroding the property lines on both sides. Setback codes provide an environmental drainage and privacy buffer. These characteristics that the code sets forth are compromised with the electrified treehouse and retaining wall structures and the drainage that four six nine zero installed without a permit. The forty foot setback at the back of everyone's property on our side of K D R and the ten foot setback on the sides should be restored. I ask that this variance request Z B A twenty four fifteen be denied and we're available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Susanna.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Milan. I reside at four six seven six Kingsdown Road in Dunwoody, three zero three three eight. My family and I have been proud Dunwoody residents since twenty fourteen. I'm here to share that we've been directly impacted by the retaining walls and rock beds that went beyond what was initially approved by the city of Dunwoody. It has caused the rotting at the base of our fence and significant erosion, which at our expense had to be filled with gravel. If the retaining walls and rock bed remains as is, we will continue to be financially impacted in order to mitigate what the residents of forty six ninety have done. For this reason, I officially oppose the variance requesting question. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Jeff, Jeff Cargill.
My name is Jeff Cargill. I live at fourteen ninety Devonshire Court, immediately behind applicants property. It butts right up to mine. I've lived there for thirty eight years, never had an issue, never had a a zoning question at all. My my concerns are too, since he's not cutting into my yard, but he has built drainage channels on his property, filled them with rocks to make sure that they flow good, and they end right on my property. So it all just dumps on my property. I'm not sure that's that's what I've been looking for. And when I first became aware of this whole issue, I was up there and inspected the property. And he had two garbage cans on my property over clearly over the line from his, and he was putting yard garbage, cuttings, grass, stuff like that on my property, and it's clearly marked. I'm not sure the well, I I'm I'm opposed to his change, but I I don't think there's been a sincere effort to stay within their property lines and and take care of their property without affecting neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. The final public comment card I have is is from Randy.
A forestry graduate, and so I saw kind of the yard before it was built, all the trees taken down and the work that needed to be done to control erosion and to take care of it, and I I think the major problem was that cutting of all the trees that caused all these problems that made them go back other ways, but really I've shared observed because I think laws are there for a reason and variances need to be really, you know, you really have to have a strong reason for variance.
Thank you. Final card now is Douglas.
My name is Douglas Nelson. I'm Chris Lauer's husband at forty seven zero four Kingsdown Road. I just want to make a few points relative to the requirements for a variance. And I I'd just like to say, what we're looking at here is not a small encroachment requested in advance as required, there were the variants requested in advance. This is basically an after the fact, after neighbors were not given an opportunity to comment. When these folks built their house, they signed the plans that were filed with the city. All these and all these offsets or setbacks were very well noted. And incidentally, to Randy's point, there were a lot of trees that were designated to be protected. If you look now, several of those trees are no longer there, including the tree on the border of our property whose roots were destroyed by the landscaping activity and the building activity of the neighbors. So just to go quickly, there is a pattern here of dumping things in other people's yards, not adhering at all to the rules until after the fact. And this will be injury injurious to the property and improvements of their neighbors. It's not based on conditions. The variance is not based on conditions that are unique to the subject property and that aren't generally applicable to other properties in the same zoning district. The condition, shape, size, orientation, or topographic conditions of the property do not deprive the property owner the rights or privileges enjoyed by other similarly situated property owners. So the variance is not necessary. Not being able to build violating structures on or near, and I'm talking about inches of the property line deep within the offsets is not unique and does not provide deprive them of the rights to their property. And the requested variance goes far beyond the minimum necessary to afford relief and granted granted their application would grant special privileges after the fact, after not showing good faith and seeking prior approval and essentially award a act and seek forgiveness later stance, which is really injurious to the policy. Could you imagine if you had these kinds of variances requested every week where people just do what they want and then come in and decide, well, I'm gonna ask for forgiveness? These are very important points, and it's very clear that the 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 request does not meet the requirements for a variance. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the comment cards we have this evening. So with that, I'll pose a public comment and open it up for board comment.
Yeah, I guess I'll start. I mean, there's a lot to unpack here. To reiterate what Joe said earlier, our our board, just so everyone's aware and more clearly and bluntly, we don't have the power to change zoning laws or anything like that, only enforce what law is already there. And furthermore, we are presented with whatever variances are triggered, right? So so there's that. So I know there was, I say that because I know there was a lot of information and detail in the packet that was provided to us about trees down and the maintenance of the property and things like that. And and you can agree, everyone's got their own opinion on on, you know, demo and rebuild and things like that. And there's a lot of hard truths to the fact that when a property is developed on, there's a lot of land disruption that happens. And that, you know, there's a house right now in Shambly Dunwoody Road. Everybody's probably seen it. There's a sign in front of it forever, about three years, and all of a sudden, all those trees are gone. And it's really sad to see that, but that's, you know, that's life. Money talks. Suffice it to say that there's two main things here is one is and and really what we can only really kind of address is the the facts are that, you know, work was done after and then after the fact, and sometimes people just don't know. They need to be educated about this. I personally went through this when we were redoing our house inside out. I didn't know you needed a permit for this, that, and the other. So I certainly understand that. So I certainly understand that side of the argument. Um, but the, but the thing is, is particularly for the applicant, in my opinion, you know, with the treehouse for one is, you know, I got kids and things too, and I think it's a great looking treehouse and everything like that, but you, you can't really have your cake and eat it too. Uh, it is over the property line, um, and, and there's setbacks and rules and there's reasons for those rules. Um, however, that being said, I don't think, and this is, I think it's maybe a little extreme where it wasn't clear to me why the city wants co- complete removal versus saying, hey, figure out somewhere else to put it in your yard. So I just wanted to mention that for you guys and how I felt about that. The retaining walls, I think, are again, whether it's an existing property and you redevelop it or it's a complete redo, land disruption happens and runoff happens and the city has tons of issues with that. It's the infrastructure of our city and DeKalb County in particular. Um, and the topography and all that kind of stuff, but at the end of the day, you can really only be, you really have to maintain what you can. And nature and nature works for and against us. So, I mean, the retaining walls to me, I mean, I'm not a retaining wall expert or anything, but it sounds like it is something that would have been approved administratively otherwise. And when none of us would be here today if it weren't for the treehouse. So that's kind of where I sit in terms of how I see this, but I think the big question for me is the, the treehouse in particular under as far as what's under our purview. Why, why do we would just want it? Why do we want it gone versus relocated? So.
And uh, uh, one member of Islinger, the um, this point of clarification, we're not asking for it inherently to be removed off the premises. Like if it can be moved to a suitable location, that's, that's fine. It's, it's just like a, a structure in its current location. And then technically we would consider the new structure, even though it's, you know, they're all the same boards and all the same materials. So if they find the location that that works, we would permit that location.
Okay, that wasn't made, I wasn't clear on that earlier because I'd asked that earlier, that question. So thanks for clarifying that.
I agree with you on the treehouse issue that the, as Allegra stated, it is in compliance of the height limitation. If there is a way, I, I saw in the pictures that it is built around a tree that is very close to that. Not just the, not just the setback line, but the property line. And that's a big issue for me. Um, if they can find a way to move it so that it is within the setback lines and that obviously won't be impacting any property issues. Um, because it does meet the height comp or it is in compliance with the height limitation. I don't think that we would be able to say that would not be in compliance because it, it would. Uh, if it were within the accessory setback limit. So if, if it, but I'm, I, as it stands now, I feel like it is in violation of several criteria that if we were to approve it staying would be granting a special privilege. Would be detrimental to the neighboring property and um, it is not necessary. It, there's no reason it had to be put right there. So I feel like we would be um, we would be not following our criteria. Um, as for the retaining walls, if they would have been approved through a special administrative permit, then I don't, as you said, we wouldn't even be here for that. I am a little bit concerned that maybe because of where they end, they are potentially creating runoff issues, but like you said, I'm not a retaining wall expert. I'm not a drainage expert. I don't know that, but what I do know is if they would have been approved through special administrative, then who am I to? So, but, but that does, I am concerned about that and I don't know if staff could address that. Or, or hold, hold on, because Erica is going to piggyback on.
I actually had some questions, Allegra, about the retaining wall that maybe you could help. So I know when retaining walls are installed, traditionally they have some drainage built within them to relieve pressure so that the water wouldn't come out on just the sides, but there would be PVC pipe and whatnot along the base. So as water comes in, it's not diverted strictly left and right, but it's allowed to seep down into the wall area and then out through the bottom into the next level and so on and so forth. Was this in, in the plan that you've received for the retaining walls now? Is there any sort of drainage elements that have been indicated or?
I'm not sure for retaining walls that are under four feet in height, we don't require engineered drawings, which would typically show the kind of information you're referencing. So um, I'm not sure.
Okay, um, because I just wonder if there was something like that, if it would help, would have helped to alleviate some of the um runoff. And then, you know, looking at it, um, one of the questions that I also had then on top of, on top of that was was the topography of the lot changed in relationship to the fence with the building of the retaining walls that then created the soil issue against the fence leading to the ultimate um rot that occurred?
So there was grading done generally on the property um and large scale draining can or grading, excuse me, can lead to sort of issues with drainage and runoff. Um, since, you know, we came in after all the work has already been done. I can't say whether the installation of the retaining wall directly led to that problem. Um, but there was large scale grading on the property generally.
Okay. Let's, I think my follow-up question to that is with the fence, can a fence be utilized as a retaining wall of sorts? So for example, when the land was regraded, could the soil have been pushed up against the fence to allow it to act as a pseudo retaining wall?
So to so to my knowledge, the fence came in after the fact. So the, the fence is like the newest.
Yeah, the new fence, I was talking about the older, the, the rotted fence.
So I mean, it's, so you don't want to do that is fundamentally how it is because of exactly problems with um with drainage and then a fence isn't intended to be structurally sound, you know, it's not intended to, to hold soil now. Whether it was graded against the fence that we don't know because we didn't, we haven't been out there before and after, you know, we, we just know how it is now, but the, I think the neighbors have alluded to that, to that extent that it was sort of graded against, against the fence.
Okay, but the new fence that's been placed is now the soil is beneath the fence level and there is what you all would consider appropriate water um runoff, like the ability to keep the water on the properties um placed appropriately.
So then the, the, the fences, if generally like if you put in a, just a privacy fence, it doesn't have that much impact on on drainage because it's the, the boards are typically not in the ground or like there. That, that is, um, I think to the sites you have sort of a, a dry riverbed.
Yeah, and and that was my question, unless the fence of sorry, more now with the retaining walls, the dry wall, uh, the dry, the river rock beds that they've placed in, is that considered substantial enough to keep the water from their property appropriately drained and not causing a negative impact on the other properties?
And that we, we really don't know because we haven't, we haven't gotten any plans or we haven't seen any plans for this.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're good. Thank you for your offer. That's, that's kind of you. Um, I think to, to go back, I don't, you probably want to say something, George, too, sorry, but to go back to the the drainage thing, I think, I think it really is, as the gentleman in the tie dye shirts said, I agree with you, it's unfortunately the removal of all those trees and, and things like that from just the redevelopment of the land more than anything. Um, and water will, as we've seen, especially in recent um events, will take the form of least resistance, but I, I did want to come back to the treehouse one more time. It's, it's, again, the thing in my head is kind of the cake and eat it too thing. Like I, I have kids myself. I want them to play outside and things like that, but I guess my question for staff is have, have there been at least extensive enough conversations between the applicant and you all to try to find another place on the property that is amenable to meeting code?
So when applicants come in who have already constructed improvements on the property, we give them one of two, you know, we, we give them two choices and we let them pick between and one choice is to bring that structure or whatever it is into compliance and the other choice is to seek a variance. Um, and so in this case, the applicant chose to move forward with the variance process. Um, we just sort of consider the requests that, that were given. We let them know their options, but then ultimately whatever, you know, they decide to ask for is, is their choice.
Thanks, Allegra. Yeah, it's kind of a binary decision, right? I mean, we can't really mitigate what that structure would look like, where it's going to be. It's really not in our purview. I think we all share the same as parents and homeowners, the same thoughts. That we, there's got to be a remedy there somewhere so they can retain that. But it's really not for us to decide tonight where, where it goes or how big it is or, or whatever. There's two, there's two variances before the board. And I think we vote on them separately. Um, and then we adjudicate from there. Any other questions or thoughts or?
No, I was trying to think of the logistics about being negated off the property and then going back through the process again. You know, but that's, you know.
But if if we conclude that it is out of compliance and in it, we cannot grant a variance for it. Then they will i- i- you know, the height is okay. They have the option to keep it on their property within the setback or without extending into the setback. And I don't, I, I'm fairly certain that would not require any kind of vary. I mean, that's just for them to make sure they're within whatever other guidelines, but not variance.
So my question is, they decided to go with this option as, as was stated earlier. What is, if this particular request were to be denied for the city's recommendation, what is the process that they go through next that they don't? If they want to have that on their property in general. It's out of our purview at that point, correct?
Correct. So, so they have the option, let's hypothetically, let's say the variance for the treehouse is denied tonight, then it would have to be removed, the treehouse would have to be removed. It could be that there is certainly legal locations on this property now. If it's locations that are suitable based on their preferences and based on the terrain that, that, I don't know. Um, I think the structure is less than two hundred square feet too, so it doesn't even need a permit. So they could just find a suitable location that meets the zoning requirements and, and reinstall it. Um, now, if, if there's a foundation, I don't quite know how exactly it is installed, if that's, if it's truly feasible or if it's aspirationally feasible, um, but, but they, they, they could do that.
Okay, so they could do that within that ninety day window, I guess, is my question, correct? That's stated on the.
Yes, that, that's great. They could put it down, take it down the same day and then put it up in a new location.
Okay, thank you.
I think Ellen, um, I, I think what I'm hearing you saying and what I'm feeling also is that if we go based on the regulation that's put before us and in particular, um, the variance, you know, so if we go for number four, the requested variance does not go beyond the minimum necessary to afford relief and does not constitute a grant of special privilege. Inconsistent with the limitations upon other similarly situated properties, what we're saying here is that to grant this would be a special privilege because there are other locations within this property that it could have been built.
That an accessory structure could have been built.
Right.
It, and in addition to that specific criteria, in terms of the grant would not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare or injurious to property or improvements, it is violating a neighbor's right to have that setback protected.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm, I would like to make a motion and as I think it was Ryan or Joe, I don't, one of you suggested that we vote on these.
Separately.
Separately. Um, I move to deny the request for a variance from chapter twenty seven, section fifty eight to allow an accessory structure to encroach into the rear and side setbacks.
You have a motion to deny?
Second.
All those in favor of the opposition to denial of the variance?
Can you restate that? I, I think it, I think you had double negatives in there.
Yeah, no, the, the, the motion was to deny the variance for uh the accessory structure, chapter twenty seven, section fifty eight. The motion was to deny that variance and we uh was unanimously approved to deny that variance. Okay.
But, but how do we vote? Okay, so, so the motion is to deny the variance for the accessory structure?
Yes.
Okay, so now we vote.
We did vote.
We did.
All those in favor.
Just clarify.
Just clarify. Okay.
So the motion uh to uh for variance for twenty seven, section fifty eight was denied. Now we have to address the uh, the second option. Yeah.
Okay, I move to approve the request for a variance from chapter twenty seven, section two sixty nine to allow retaining walls to encroach into the rear and side setbacks, subject to the conditions presented by staff. Construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by Alpha Land Services dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty four, with the exception oh, hold on. That the
Yeah, that's
accessory structure be removed. See appendix A. The accessory structure shall be removed within ninety days at this variance approval. I, I would like to clarify, wait.
Yeah, don't put those in because this was if we were voting on it as a package.
Okay, so, so you know what, though?
Do you want to withdraw your motion?
Well, we've already voted on my first of them. Okay, let me withdraw that because I
And, and um, just like as, we would love to have it somewhere in there, um, to have the ninety days specified. So we would still like as a condition, if, if you all choose to vote on this, then we have um a variance approval for the retaining walls with the condition that the uh treehouse needs to be removed with, within those ninety days, which I think is, is, is fine, you know, that's that's a proper condition to this and that gives everybody a certainty, you know, but, but the type.
So you can add that second.
I, I can.
Criteria in there.
I can add that.
And we just can't do, we can't do condi- conditions to denials. That's, that's the challenge.
Okay.
We can't do a conditional denial. We can only do a conditional approval.
Okay, so I, I can state it, but here's what I would like to say is that, and, and I think I have to. So I did, I withdraw my, I need to submit a new motion. Do you want to do it? Okay, if, if you want to try, because I, I wanted to put some kind of a clarification in there that the accessory structure doesn't have to be completely removed from the property.
Yep.
Just from the location where it is extending into this, the side, the accessory setbacks.
And
Maybe, maybe easier to said moved to, if, if chosen, moved to an appropriate location on the property that um that is within code.
Or si- simply say from the encroached area, removed from the
Okay.
Because you're really, it's, you're trying to remove it from the
Shall, shall be removed from the encroached area. Okay.
Paul, to your point, these are packaged, these two variances, like our vote earlier is still fine, right?
E- e- everything is good. I think you're on, on the exactly right track, like that's um, I, I think what you all are doing exactly works.
Yeah, I think.
Okay. Um, let me, let me try this unless somebody feels that they have the wording exactly, but, okay, I move to approve the request for a variance from chapter twenty seven, section two sixty nine to allow retaining walls to encroach into the rear and side setbacks, subject to conditions presented by staff. One, construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by Alpha Land Services and dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty four, with the exception that the accessory structure be removed from encroaching into the rear and side setbacks.
Within ninety days.
With, within ninety days of this variance approval. Once removed from the encroached location, the applicant shall notify the community development director. The applicant shall notify the community development director who will conduct a site inspection to confirm.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor? So we have approved the. Section two sixty nine of chapter twenty seven to allow the retaining walls to exist. Okay. All right. Thank you, Borge.
Thank you.
Other business staff? We already had public comment. Board comment?
I actually, can I say something really quickly? I I think folks might maybe be confused about special privilege and and some of this. And so something to consider out there for those of you who are here, some things that we look at, for example. I think it was last month, we were presented with a house that literally like ninety percent of the property was within a stream buffer. And so they couldn't have done anything and that stream buffer changes as Georgia law changes. Stream buffers change, so the state might make it twenty five feet and then. You know, regulations change and all of a sudden it's seventy five feet. And so a property would exist significantly within a stream buffer where they wouldn't have even a backyard where they could put anything. So in something like that, that's what we would consider a hardship, that their home is located in an area. That is, doesn't allow them to use their home in a way that would be considered typical and normal as their neighbors. Or other folks within the city. So for example, if they wanted to put a storage shed, there would be nowhere for them to put it on their property. Due to the existing hardships of that property. So that's the kind of thing that we would have the ability to then extend that variance to because that is considered a hardship. And I think one of the differences here that we were considering tonight is that this property doesn't have those types of constraints. And so the hardship isn't present like it would be in other locations. I hope that helps clarify some of the thought process that we move through.
Thank you.
Okay.
With that, we are adjourned.